All right. Good evening and welcome to the Yukon City Council Municipal Authority Meeting. It's December 1st, 2020. Whoa, we have a house full tonight, don't we? Everybody quit breathing. At 7:00 PM, we're in the council chambers at 12 South Fifth Street. Our invocation will be, no one has told me different, will be Pastor Chad Penner, and then we'll have the flag salute. If you'd like to come forward, sir.
Lord, in uncertain times, we give thanks for the certainty of who you are. Your word tells us you are unchanging in your character, yesterday, today, and tomorrow. Today, I depend on that promise in ways unlike the past. I pray your spirit would rest on those asked by us as citizens to uphold the seats on the opposite side of this desk. They carry a burden we do not fully understand. May they do so with humbleness for all that is broken and weary in our community. I pray they rest on your divine knowledge so they would lead us into what is right and good for every citizen and visitor to our city. I pray for protection for them and their families as they lead in times that are impossible to make everyone happy, in fact, are guaranteed to upset many. May they lead from wisdom more than emotion, but may their love for Yukon cause them to lead with a full heart. May we as citizens care more for others than for ourselves. May we do what is necessary to protect and care, even if it saddles our own preferences for a time. May you, as Rawa Raphaim, the God who heals, strengthen the hands of our doctors, nurses, and other emergency personnel who are on the front lines of this health pandemic that death may be no more. Calm the nerves of the fragile, give rest to the worn, and guidance to decisions that will lead us into our future, I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, can we have roll call, please?
Selby?
Here.
Wooten?
Here.
Yonda?
Here.
Kachini?
Here.
Gilliland?
Here.
All right, presentations and proclamations. Councilman Kachini asked me if I would speak to someone and make a proclamation, and I said, you know, Councilman Kachini, you're the one that was involved, and I think it'd be a great honor for you to be the one that makes this presentation. So I fully support you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Councilman. At this time, I'd like to think about the people that have served overseas. This is Christmas time, a lot of veterans aren't going to be able to be with their families. I've spent 40 years in uniform, and many of those holidays, I was overseas. And so, when I come across people helping veterans, I really feel good about it. I've got two individuals that I'd like to bring up at this time. Jenny?
Mm-hmm.
Katie, come on up, please. Please, come up. These two ladies-
This is what I didn't want to do. I knew you'd be upset.
These two ladies have done a lot for helping veterans. They're on my staff at the Veterans Museum. They've helped veterans, not just at the museum, but everywhere they go. And we recently had a gala, and I tell you, these two ladies were the backbone. I was faltering at one time because I was supposed to be messing up the CDC and the mayor's rules. I had eight people per table when I'm supposed to have four, so these ladies got me squared away and kept me out of jail. And I know John was right there with the handcuffs, so he was ready to get me. So I want to thank these two ladies, and I've got something here for you. Grandma, this one's yours. On behalf of all the veterans in our community, I'd like to give you this flag salute. Why don't you get a little closer? And let's give them a hand, people. Let's give these two ladies a hand. Thank you very much. Thank you.
You could tell by their hesitation to come forward that they're very humble servants, and that we do appreciate all that you did for the veterans party that they have. So thank you so very, very much. All right, do we have any visitors?
I have no requests, Madam Mayor.
All right, is there anyone who would like to speak tonight? Seeing none, then we will recess as the Yukon City Council and reconvene as Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A, YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of November 17th, 2020, and B, payment of material claims in the amount of $307,083.49. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Kachini?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Item 2A, Consider Approving the City of Yukon Sports Park Land Lease Bid Specifications and Authorizing the Purchasing Agent to Advertise for Bids for the Lease of the Sports Park Land. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, can we, I'm really curious what, until we got our agenda and explanations, I didn't have any idea that this was something that was being considered. Can we get kind of an explanation where this comes from, what brought this about?
Okay, Councilman, right now, we have an individual that basically cuts and bales the grass that's on the property.
Right.
We actually had somebody come to us and ask about a lease and actually paying us something for it, as well as putting improvements on the property. And we felt like right now is a good opportunity to do that, because anything we do with the park would be down the road a ways, so we're at least three to five years down the road of doing something with it, maybe a little bit longer. So we felt like if we could get a little return on our investment, as well as not having to worry about mowing it or keeping it up, that we would go out and see if there was interest in renting it for pasture land. We are going to keep the eastern portion, 650 foot along Frisco that abuts, for future development in case there's something that comes along that we can work with Oklahoma City to be able to develop that strip. So we are keeping that eastern portion open and not be fenced at all. So we'd still have that to maintain and keep up.
So the current bid would be for a three-year lease?
It's a three-year with the renewal, is what we're proposing.
And that would require a council vote?
The council would have to do that, the authority would have to do that. Like I said, you know, with the three years, we'll know where we're at in the next couple of years, and where we're going to head with it, or maybe within the next six years, we'll know. To do plans and stuff, we're still, you know, it'll take a year or so to do that, so we'd have enough lead time and maybe even have a clause in here that at any time we could cancel this contract if we're going to use the land for some purpose related to city use or what we see fit.
Is that, as it's written now, is that 180 days that we would require?
Well, that was one of the recommendations, but also, at the same time, that was probably not long enough time for somebody to do that. You know, if they rent it for three years and put a fence in, they need to be able to get use of that fence. So that's something we'd look at as we go through and see what kind of interest we have.
But that's what I was going to ask, what, have we defined pasture?
Basically, we're not going to let them cultivate the land. If they need to build, you know, water retention or something for watering or something, we'll work with the city engineer to do that, but we're not going to let them cultivate the land as a pasture for wheat or some other thing.
I'm not sure if you can say it, but what would you anticipate would be a ballpark on what we could recover as far as the lease amount goes?
Not sure. That's why we're going to go out and see what kind of interests we have. You know, we'll find the interest in what somebody might offer. At that time, we'd bring it back to the council, and if the council chooses to do so, then we can move forward with the contract.
So doing this, just so we're clear, if we approve this-
This is-
We're not buying ourselves to approve some bid. We could still reject any bid.
You could reject any bid, and then, like I said, in the contract, we could put any clause that you'd want in that, that we could work out with an individual if we do have the interest.
So would they have to have their plan all laid out when the contract's signed?
Basically, we'd have that all worked out. We'd write that into the contract, making sure that we address any issues that we may see going forward, and any issues that the council may have or concerns. We'd make sure that contract, we'd cover it best as we could.
And then if they wanted to make changes throughout the course of the contract, then they'd have to come back to the city?
That's correct.
Get approval? Okay.
This is just approval to get bids.
This is just to see what kind of interests we have, to see what's out there, because like right now, we have kind of a handshake, and an individual comes and keeps it mowed down. So we were just thinking, in case that individual couldn't, then we would have to mow all that, and it takes several days to do that.
Sure.
And what we're really worried about is the volunteer trees, the cottonwoods and stuff, because it seems like when we stopped there for a while, they were growing pretty fast.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Seeing none, let's vote.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes. Item 3A, Consider Approving Billboard-Signed Lease Bid Specifications and Authorizing the Purchasing Agent to Advertise for Bids for the Sell of the Current Billboard Lease. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Any discussion?
Where's the billboards at? Mitch, can you tell me which billboards we're talking about? I'm sorry to bring this up.
Several years ago, the council was looking at ways to advertise Yukon. This is located way out west of Cimarron. We've got a parcel that's on both sides of I-40. This is basically for the eastbound. We bought two locations for billboards to be placed out there, and for whatever reason, we didn't move forward with the billboards because of the cost, because we're over 370-some-thousand for a double-faced digital billboard, and that doesn't include the electric getting to it.
Yeah.
But we bought two locations out there to advertise Yukon. The council, several years ago, did that.
Well, good.
And because of cost and stuff, it's been kind of cost prohibitive right now to be able to do something with that. So our thought was to see what kind of interest is out there, and maybe sell these leases if somebody can use them. And this is the only two locations left in the city of Yukon that we can actually have billboards.
All right.
Because everything else is already spaced out and leased out or sold along the corridor of I-40.
Well, good. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions, discussion? Seeing none, let's vote, please.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Item 4A, Consider Approving and Accepting the Following Regarding the State Highway 4 Roadway Project for Warranty Deals Number 1 through 6 for a Strip, Piece, or Parcel of Land Lined in the Southeast Quarter of Section 17 Township 12 North, Range 5 West of the Indian Meridian Canadian County, Oklahoma, known as Parcel Number 8. Payments in the Amount of $20,871 to Vicki Jo Horn Rawls, $3,912 to Bessie Holman 1993 Living Trust, $1,305 to Stanley and Lisa Horn, $1,956 to Jerry G. Horn, $978 to Larry J. Morgan and Peggy J. Morgan Family Trust, and $978 to Sherry A. McKay. Do I have a motion?
So move. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Kachini?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
All right, we will now adjourn as YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Item 1, Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda, sorry, my mic seems to be going out, so the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve A, the Minutes of the Regular Meeting of November 17th, 2020, B, Payment of Material Claims in the Amount of $907,220.52, C, Designating the Items on the Attached List from the Technology Department as Surplus and Authorizing Their Sale, Donation, or Trade, and D, Setting the Date for the Next Regular Council Meeting for December 15th, 2020, 7:00 PM in the Council Chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South Fifth Street. Do I have a motion?
Motion accept. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
All right, do we have any reports of boards, commissions, or city officials?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to report that our debris for the ice storm, the property that we have out on Frisco Road and Route 66, will be open to the public, that is, to our residents. They have to take a bill out there, but it will be open until December the 15th. It will be closed after that date to the public.
Thank you. And also that we will be hopefully finished with our second pass-through by Friday-
Yes, ma'am.
-if you weren't at the study session. We want to say thank you. All right, item number 3, Consider Approving Budget Amendments for Physical Year 2021. Do I have a motion?
Motion accept. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes. Item number 4, Consider Approving a Revised Amount Not to Exceed $700,000 for Emergency Storm Debris Removal Services from the October 26th, 2020 ice storm with Shawnee Mission Tree Service, Inc., DBA, Arbor Master Tree Service. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
How close are we getting to that number at this point?
Right now, we've got, I think it's around $480,000 to Arbor Masters, but we also have the tub grinding, too.
Right. Okay.
The city did feel when we were in the study session that that would be enough to finish us out. Okay, let's vote.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Item number 5, Consider Approving the Assumption by Patford EMS of Oklahoma, Inc., of the Current Ambulance Service Agreement with CLV Enterprises, Inc., DBA, Samaritan EMS. Patford EMS assumes the Terms of the Samaritan EMS Agreement. Do I have a motion?
Motion accept.
Second. Any discussion?
Well, are we going to have somebody from Patford sail home?
Hello?
All right. Well, I didn't get to meet you, so I guess I'll meet you afterwards.
In our study session, we discussed all of the things, and so if you're interested in finding out more about them, please go back and watch the study session. We found out a lot of good information.
Thank you.
I just would like to note that if we don't approve the assumption of the contract, we would have no-
That is correct.
-guaranteed emergency service in-
We wouldn't have any.
Right.
That's correct. So this is essential to our city. If we have to wait 20, 30, 45 minutes for an ambulance to come from Oklahoma City, that would be very devastating.
Absolutely.
Okay, let's vote.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Item number 6, Consider Approving an Amendment to Contract with Patford EMS of Oklahoma, Inc., of the Current Ambulance Service Agreement to Provide a Monthly Stipend in the Amount of $13,000. Do I have a motion?
Motion accept.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have a couple of questions. Is this that we didn't talk about during the study session? Is it, would this 13,000, is that anything that could fall into the category? Well, first, I guess I would ask if our CARES money has been exhausted, and if not, is this expense something that could be covered by the CARES money?
I think it's two separate things, isn't it?
Okay, yes. Yeah.
Yeah, CARES takes care of the COVID stuff that happened to us and-
Well, we saw a decrease in the number of people that were enrolled in the service, the opt-in, over the last year, so I didn't know if that might be something that would be applicable.
Well, I think that's in accounting, basically, I mean, where the CARES account, whatever, where the money went into, and where the CARES account, or the money for the stipend are to them, we've already done the budget amendment for that.
Okay.
You've already approved that.
And I think we saw that we were already doing a stipend previously when we had Samaritan.
No, not when we had-
Not when we had Samaritan?
Well, in the beginning, we did.
Okay.
Right. Along with the memberships, we paid them for those-
Part of the membership.
So what happens here, if this gets, this part gets voted down, what happens next?
If you do not approve this, then we will not be able to pay Patford the $13,000, so there will be no allocation to them.
Does that violate, then, our contract?
Well, what we just did, what you just did in this, in the item before, was to assume the terms, which, the terms from before, they did not have that in there.
So the question is, would we still have service if we don't approve the 13,000 amount?
Let me think, Judge Miller. Patford would have to answer that.
Can Patford answer that?
Patford, stand your right here, cannot answer that.
That would come from higher up.
That would have to play off Jamie Patford.
This is not an unusual request.
No.
It's not unusual at all, and we cannot afford to lose our ambulance service.
I agree.
We would never get an ambulance out of Oklahoma City, because they're not, we wouldn't be a priority.
No.
I agree. I'm just, how do we get to the 13,000? Like, why not 20,000, or why not 5,000? I mean, what was the deciding factor that says to have our service, it needs to be this amount?
I think that is what Patford asked for, that that's what they needed in order to stay in business, to do business with us.
That amount was negotiated by Jim and Patford.
Right.
Okay.
It wasn't a random number.
No.
That's what they came to the conclusion for. But we also see that if we go on, later on in the agenda, that we could be getting some of that money back each month. Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Kachini?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes. Okay, number 7, Consider Entering Into a Project Agreement Between the Oklahoma Department of Transportation and the City of Yukon for a 10-foot wide trail on the east side of Garth Brooks Boulevard from Route 66 to Vandement Avenue for a total project cost of $767,635, $515,960 was the federal share, $251,675 is the city share, as budgeted in the physical year 2021 grant fund. Do I have a motion?
So move. Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I've got some.
Okay.
I have a question about this 10-foot wide. Why is it so wide? I run with the park district on their 5Ks, and I never get 10 feet wide.
That's a recommendation by ODOT to have the 10-foot wide trail, which is why we get the federal grant for the money.
Oh, okay.
Do we already have the easements that would be necessary for it?
Yes, sir, we have all the easements, and this is the payment to ODOT, and once that's done, then they will take it out to bid, and we hope that would go out in March. So from the middle school to Vandement, there's already a very wide sidewalk there? This grant, this trail will not take away that sidewalk. We decided that was sufficient, since it was a fairly new sidewalk. This trail starts at the middle school and goes north all the way to Main Street on the east side of the road. Okay, so it starts on the south side of the middle school, and then? Yeah, kind of in the middle, where there's no sidewalk by the middle school. Okay. So the south side, yes, sir. Okay. So essentially, it's going to be Yukon Avenue, duh. Yes, sir.
Be a wonderful addition to our Garth Brooks Boulevard.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Claudia. Let's vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Item number 8, Consider Approving the Garth Brooks Boulevard and I-40 Right Turn Lanes Project at the Cost of $322,694.92 to Brewer Construction Oklahoma using unit bid prices from the 2020 Concrete and Asphalt Paving Drainage Water and Sewer Project Contract. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mitch, do you want to tell everybody a little bit about this?
Okay, this is our second phase of our project on Garth Brooks, trying to help move traffic. This will be coinciding with the other project as well. We are adding right-hand turn lanes off of Garth Brooks onto I-40. As you can see, the plans are in there, which gives us some stacking distance, which we can get that traffic moving a little bit faster to the east and to the west. We also took an alternate, which allows for a video camera, which basically moves the traffic. It sees the traffic and moves it. The current loops that are in the pavement are broken up, so we took the alternate, which gives us the number we've got. But like I said, this is the second phase of several phases that we're doing on Garth Brooks, and hopefully we'll get that traffic moving a lot better. We're thinking, we're probably going to start the second week of January, weather permitting on this, and like I said, they'll work with the other group that's doing the traffic singleization project.
So this will be right in front of Brahms and Del Taco?
Yes, yes. It starts pretty close to Del Taco, the right-hand turn lane going to the east, and the same with Brahms. It's past Brahms a little bit, and it's, there's part of a shoulder there already. They'll re-mark it and add to it that will go on to the east.
You know how many, roughly, how many cars will be able to?
I don't remember the stacking. It was done by the design engineer, the traffic engineer. I don't know the stacking, but as you can see, it's several hundred feet to both directions, so it allowed quite a bit of stacking.
Very good.
All right, any other questions for Mitch? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Much needed. Right, seeing no other questions, let's vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
All right, item number 9, consider entering into a service agreement with IWORQ in the amount of $24,500 for a developmental service software as approved in the physical year 2021 Technology Capital Improvement Budget, as recommended by the Information Technology Director. Do I have a motion?
Motion accepted.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote, please.
Wooten?
Yes.
Gillen?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Item number 10, consider approving change order for number 3 for the City of Yukon Emergency Operations Center at a cost of $2,321.64 for a sidewalk on the northwest corner of the police station, as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion?
So, move. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gillen?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, item number 11, we will consider a motion to recess as Yukon City Council and convene into executive session for discussing the hiring of a city manager and a city attorney as provided for in 25 OS 2003, Section 307B1. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
Second.
No discussion, can we vote, please?
Kachini?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Gillen?
Yes.
Okay, we will now go into executive session. If you need your papers signed, please, you can come up and do one of those for the kids. Also, we'll need Ms. Shivers and Mr. Shivers to come with us, please. That is right, you guys are the diehard people, aren't you? Oh, they'll come back. Can we get by? You ate all those peanuts. I don't know if you can get by. Wait just a moment. All right. Item number 12, we will consider a motion to adjourn from executive session and reconvene as Yukon City Council. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
Kachini?
Yes.
Gillen?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
I would like now to read the minutes of the executive session. While in executive session, only the items on the agenda were discussed, no action was taken, and no votes were cast. Is there any new business?
None tonight, Madam Mayor.
Okay, let's have our council discussion. Councilwoman Yonda, we'll start with you.
Well, I just want to encourage everyone to shop local and support our local businesses. Thank you.
Councilman Wood?
Mr. Peters, I want to thank you for being on the traffic commission. Thank you for what you do. Thank you for staying for the whole meeting. Appreciate you.
Anything else? All right, Councilman Kachini?
Well, I want to thank the city for their tree debris removal and the lights, they're outstanding, and I'm glad that we're all working together. Thank you.
Councilman Gillen?
It is the most wonderful time of the year, so I would just encourage us, it's something